Welcome everyone to the May Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting for the Town of Lloyd. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible liberty and justice of all.
Like to thank everyone for being here. There's no smoking. Eggs that's around the backside, please turn your cell phones to vibrate. All right. New business Harvey David, area variance 271 Vineyard Avenue, SBL 95.2-1-8.100. Applicant is seeking an area variance for a shed. Step right up. Have a seat right there. Push the button on the microphone till it turns green and tell us who you are and what you want to do.
Okay. Hello everyone, my name is Dave Harvey. So can see on the survey there in the kind of upper middle corner is a location of where we would like to put a shed. So it's a 10 by 14 A-frame shed just for storage of lawn equipment, things like that. Understand that the rule is that a structure like that needs to be five feet away from a property line. So the making the request, I guess, and my assumption, and I don't know if this is correct, but I think that rule probably is in place so that you're not going right up against your neighbor's property or crowding their property. I don't know if this makes a difference or not, but right on the other side of that property line is an apple orchard. So there's no structures there. There's about 35 feet of grass and then apple trees start there. So it's really nothing on the other side. Not nothing, but there's no structures on the other side of that fence. So kind of with the structure of the backyard, you can see in the middle there, there's a pool with a pool fence. There's not much room aside from where we want to put it. If we want to put it close to that side of the house. So that is why I'm asking for a review.
So the five feet, that's for maintenance, when you want to paint it, when you want to work on it, when you want to maintain the other side of it. We don't want you going on somebody else's property. Now, right now, that's an apple orchard. Who's to say however many years down the road, it's not going to be. And you would have to go on your neighbor's property to do any maintenance to the shed. Couple of things. One is when you measured the 1.4 feet, were you from the side of the building or from the eve? From the roof structure? Because in your application, the roof actually sticks proud the building. And I don't know how far that is. So was it from this point or this point?
So that's a good question. That was done by the surveyor. I would assume just based on the information I gave them, it is from the wall of the structure.
The wall. So actually, your roof line is even closer. So if you need to put a roof on it. And can I ask why you'd want 1.4? Like is it an arbitrary number? Is there a reason why you'd have to be that close?
I didn't tell them 1.4, to be honest with you. I think that was the surveyor's assumption. I think he was including, so our fence is six inches inside of our property line. So he's including that in the 1.4 and then the width of the fence itself. And then maybe a little give as well. I think that's where he got it. I don't know for sure, but it's a somewhat arbitrary number. I'm sure they're not going to put the shed completely flush with the fence. That there will be some space there, but.
Okay. Because honestly, if you were five feet, you don't have to be here. And it speeds that process up. I was just wondering whether there's something that prevents you from moving it 3.6 feet.
Yeah, and it's hard to show on there too. But the fence has a gate right to the north of, or the way we're looking at it, to the top side of the dwelling there. There's an actual entrance that it would, we would start to block that entrance. If we get to five feet, we'd be really close to the gate opening and closing. Also really close to the pool fence. You'd make it difficult to kind of get around with like a lawnmower and things like that in that area.
So my initial reaction is 1.4 is a little close. If we can move it further away. I think what we'd like to see, and I'm speaking for the board, but if you can take some pictures of the area, kind of put some flags where the building's going to be, where your gate is going to be. You know, if your gate is here, you put a flag, a blue flag where the building is at 1.4 and a pink flag at four feet. It's a lot easier to grant a variance where we know you can get alongside the building, do maintenance, do whatever you need to, because 1.4 feet doesn't. And if there's a fence in between there, you're, there's no, there's no room there at all. So I mean, if you could provide that, you know what I mean? Kind of, kind of work with it a little bit. Do any other members of the board have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, how's the topography in your yard? There's all pretty flat. Was there a reason that you couldn't put it somewhere else in the yard?
It's fairly flat. I honestly don't want it in that open space. I'd rather not have a shed at all than to just have it kind of sitting randomly in the middle of the yard like that. So yeah, no other reason besides that. But it is pretty flat.
Anyone else have any? Entertain a motion to set a public hearing for our next board meeting. Second? Aye, all in favor? Aye. Okay, we'll see you in a month. The plot plan looks pretty good. We can work with that. If you can get us some pictures and the more you can move it, the better, the easier it's going to be for us to grant the variance. All right? Thank you very much. Public hearing Reynolds Mark, area variance 235 Hollies Corners Road, SBL 79.4-1-30. Applicant is seeking an area variance to allow a 959 square foot accessory apartment where a maximum of 650 square foot, square feet is allowed. Step right up, Mark. You've been here before. Just don't forget to push the little button so we can hear you. Nope, green. There you go. Okay, so as last we met, I don't think we required anything from the applicant. We had Paul draft a draft resolution. Mark, do you have anything to add?
No, nothing's really changed.
Nothing's changed. You haven't torn down any walls and.
Since 1942 when it was built.
All right, there you go. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to be heard on this application? Thanks Sarah. It's a good thing you're here. Entertain a motion to open a public hearing. Aye. Is there any member of the public?
I had one question, or one thought. I got a call from a neighbor of mine who couldn't be here. He said he sent a.
I'm going to read it in.
He did, okay.
Yep, I'm going to read it in. So is there any member of the public either here or via Zoom that wishes to be heard? Okay, we have correspondence from, oh, let's see here. Brian Beely, 243 Hollies Corners Road. Zoning Board of Appeals, I received a variance letter today and would like to let you know I have no issues with what is being requested for 235 Hollies Corners Road. I understand my property at 243 Hollies Corners sits adjacent to that address. I will not be able to make the meeting, but would like to let you know that I have no issue with this request. Think it's supposed to say, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. And he left his contact information. I didn't have any questions, so I didn't contact him. Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns for the applicant? All right, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Okay, let's run down through the balancing test. All right. Pursuant to New York State Town Law, do I have to read all the letters and numbers, Paul? Or can I just skip past that? Thanks. All right. Granted, the requested variance for the project would not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to the neighbors as the accessory efficiency apartment is proposed within the basement of the existing single-family dwelling and will result in no visible changes to the character of the neighborhood. Further, since the proposed accessory apartment will not include a separate bedroom and will be constructed on 3.5 acre parcel in a zoning district where only one acre is required for a dwelling unit, accessory apartments are allowed pursuant to the special use permit. No impacts to the neighborhood or detriment to the neighbors, traffic noise, et cetera, is associated with the proposed 310 square foot increase in the size of the accessory apartment. The benefits sought to the applicant for the project cannot be achieved by any feasible way without a requested variance. There is no alternative method because the measurements of the accessory apartment are taken from the outside of the 24 inch thick exterior basement walls of the existing dwelling surrounding the proposed accessory apartment. Increasing the measured size of the apartment by over 200 square feet for purposes of compliance with the zoning code. As a result, there is no feasible method to achieve the applicant's goal of converting their basement into an accessory apartment without an area variance. Three, the requested area variance is substantial. The requested area variance is 48% more than the maximum allowable size of an accessory apartment. However, the accessory apartment will be located within an existing basement of a single-family dwelling and will be an efficiency that does not include a separate bedroom. There will be no impact to the neighborhood or the environment. Or four, granted, the requested variance would not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district as the accessory efficiency apartment is proposed within the existing basement and will result in no visual impacts. Further, since the proposed accessory apartment will not include a separate bedroom and will be constructed on a 3.5 acre parcel in a zoning district where only one acre is required for a dwelling unit and accessory apartments are allowed pursuant to the special use permit, no environmental impacts, traffic noise, et cetera, is associated with the proposed 310 square foot increase in the size of the accessory apartment. The applicant's need for requested variance is self-created. However, the self-created difficulty is not dispositive to an area variance request. Whereas pursuant to the above finding, New York State Town Law 267B3B, statutory balancing demonstrates that in any detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community arising from granting a requested variance is outweighed by the benefits of the applicant of such a grant. Close the public hearing. Based on applicant's supporting information, include the applicant's project plans, public hearing and the applicant's variance, the applicant's request for an area variance for the project is granted. Like to entertain a motion to grant the variance as read. Bill, you have a second? All right, roll call. Yes for me, Paul?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Jessica, yeah. Cory?
Yes.
Okay. And Jessica's not here. Congratulations, Mark.
Thanks so much, I appreciate it.
And as soon as it's drafted, I'll sign it and good to go. I think she's already done that, so I can sign it tonight. Conti John, area variance 225 Martin Avenue, SBL 79.2-2-10.110. Applicant seeking area variance to allow 860 square foot accessory apartment where a maximum of 650 square feet is allowed. Has anything changed?
Yep.
I don't believe we required anything of the applicant from our last meeting. Is that correct?
No, just a meeting with the planning board.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing. All right, all in favor? Aye. Is there any member of the public here or on Zoom that wishes to be heard on this matter?
We have her.
We do. Okay, we have an email from John and Beth Stork. Beth and I are submitting this email and would like this to be read into the minutes of the zoning meeting. We are in complete support of the minor variance, which will allow John Conti to create the required structure to accommodate his personal family needs and business efforts. We are the immediate neighbors of John and have absolutely no objection to this very small variance request. If no one has any questions, comments, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. You have to read all that again. I do. All right. Granted, the requested variance for the project would not produce an undesirable change in the character of your neighborhood or detriment to the neighbors as the one-bedroom accessory apartment is proposed within the accessory garage and will result in no visible changes to the character of the neighborhood. Further, since the proposed accessory apartment will only include one bedroom and will be constructed on 9.5 acre parcel in a zoning district where only one acre is required for a dwelling unit and accessory apartments are allowed pursuant to the special use permit, no impacts to the neighborhood or detriment to the neighbors, traffic noise, et cetera, associated with the proposed 210 square foot increase in the size of the accessory apartment will occur. Two, while the applicant could limit the size of the accessory apartment in the new garage to 650 square feet without the need for a variance, 650 square feet does not provide sufficient space to meet the applicant's financial objectives for a one-bedroom accessory apartment. As a result, there is not another feasible method to achieve the applicant's objective without an area variance. Three, the requested variance is substantial. The request for area variance is 32% more than the maximum allowable size for an accessory apartment. However, the accessory apartment will be constructed within the new garage and will only include one bedroom, so it will have no impact on the neighborhood or environment. Four, granted, the requested variance would not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district as one-bedroom accessory apartment is proposed within the accessory garage and will result in no visual impacts. Further, since the proposed accessory apartment will only include one bedroom and will be constructed on 5.9 acre parcels in a zoning districts where one acre is required for a dwelling unit and an accessory apartment are allowed pursuant to special use permit, no environmental impacts, traffic noise, et cetera, will be associated with the proposed 210 square foot increase in the size of the accessory apartment will occur. Five, the applicant's need for the requested variance is self-created. However, a self-created deficiency is not dispositive for an area variance request. Statutory balance demonstrates that detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community arising from granting a requested variance is outweighed by the benefit of the applicant of such a grant. Based on the applicant's application, supporting information include the applicant's project plans and public hearing on the applicant's variance request, the applicant's request for an area variance for the project is granted pursuant to a vote. Like to entertain a motion to grant the variance as read.
I make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Russ? Roll call. It's a yes for me. Paul?
Yes.
Bill? Russ?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Congratulations, I'll sign it tonight. Thank you very much. All right. Continued public hearing Pew Trevor, area variance for Eagle Court, SBL 86.4-3-9.100. Applicant is seeking an area variance to allow two flag lots in a two-lot subdivision where only one flag lot is allowed. Hello Patty, how are you?
Good evening.
I don't believe we requested anything of the applicant from the last meeting. We had to do our own homework, which I have done.
I have previously submitted to the town my variance test certificate.
Okay.
I figured I would bring copies.
Is this, this isn't different from the one you did? This looks, at least the first part was the same as the one I've already, okay. Is everybody familiar? This is the same one we've had?
Yep.
Photos that were actually taken today from looking towards some basically.
Where am I?
From house site looking towards.
Sarah, can you bring the map up, please?
What do you want?
Do you guys see my truck in here?
The, huh, the sub, the.
No, that's still left. I can't see that either.
Can't see my truck?
Knock off the.
I see your house.
Go to the map.
Which map? I have like six, seven maps for that.
Should have told me, I want to give you a ride.
Do you want the new subdivision, the original?
The newest one that we prepared.
I don't seem to have that one on here for some reason.
Okay.
Which is weird. I know I put it on here and I don't.
Yeah, because we definitely had it last month though.
Yeah. Well, for the pictures for orientation, Patty can, Patty can give it to us.
Yeah, that's, I don't know.
Yeah, perfect.
Had to find where I put it.
So it's from here looking in this direction.
So basically, yeah, it's from here looking in this direction. So you can see there's, you know, the vegetation is all in this area and there's one little hole which is lining up with that that needs to be fixed.
Oh wow, so this is, this is the drive, this is the hole you're talking about? This one right here?
Yeah, and when you really zoom in, you can see there's the mobile home. You see this outline right here?
Oh yeah.
That's actually the house.
Okay.
That's the garage across the street.
Okay. Take a peek. Okay, so if we have no questions for the applicant's representative, like to open the public hearing? We don't have to do it again, right? Man, it's a good thing you're here. Okay. So are there any members of the public that wish to be heard? Step up, state your name.
James Rosa, 14 Falcon Drive. This is my attorney, Paul Ackerman.
Good evening, Paul Ackerman, representing Mr. Rosa and Mr. and Mrs. Sicily, which are the next door neighbors. Do you want to just address the issue with the vegetation?
Yeah, the vegetation's not that thick. It's still clear as day. Not, yes, it grows in in the summertime and in the wintertime, there's absolutely nothing there. So for six months of the year, you can see everything perfectly. And for the other six months of the year, you have somewhat of a view block, but there's, the vegetation's not that thick. There's not actually that much there anymore. So you can still see the houses clear as day, especially if they were to put something halfway in between the two houses at this point, like they're trying to plan. So the vegetation still is not, yeah, it's not this winter time anymore. It does grow in, but there's no buffer that's going to make anything from not seeing anything or causing any more of this to get any better.
And you also explain just the pooling water?
Yeah, so all the wetland issues still back there that I raised. Yeah, so all the wetland issues still back there that I raised up last time, um, that comes and goes depending on the season, the amount of rain we have and how dry the ground is or not dry, um, that just comes and goes throughout all types of the year. Like we had obviously a very, I would say, warm winter, it wasn't as cold as it's been, so early on in the season, it's like a pond back there when it gets a lot of rain, um, especially in the back corner of my property that leads into the corner of that property. Where I brought up that the D C has that, that federal wetland that they hold on their maps.
So I just want to, um, just make a few comments, um, my clients are just, want everybody to play by the rules, uh, so Mr. Rosa, Mr. Cecili bought these properties, um, knowing that potentially there could be a development behind them, but they also knew that that would be limited to a single flag lot. Now, uh, we're requesting two flag lots, which is a substantial change from what is permitted by the zoning code, uh, it's a hundred percent. The applicant knew that it wasn't permitted, uh, and made an application to this board, which the board rightfully denied in twenty twenty-two. The application that's before you is not substantially different, uh, I've heard the word substantially different, but it's not. Uh, a fifty-foot, uh, moving of the structure, uh, is really not going to have any impact. Uh, a structure that is a hundred and fifty feet away is not much different than if it was fifty feet away or a hundred feet away, it's going to be seen the same way. Uh, there is a continuing concern with the pooling of water, the flooding of that part right there, and once that's developed, that water's going to go somewhere. My client's property is just downhill from there, likelihood is, is going to start impacting his property, uh, and that is a major concern. So this board has a precedent when it denied the previous application, uh, there is no rational basis to disturb that twenty twenty-two decision denying the application. The new application is not substantially different, it's a minor tweak which really does not impact the criteria, uh, what, that was weighed by this board and the determination that it was made. So we would just ask that the board stand by its precedent, its previous denial of the application, make a determination that this is not a rational change, uh, that would, uh, permit the disturbing of that precedent and deny that application also. Anything else you want to add?
No, I can give my sums up, what I talked about.
Thank you, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does any other member of the public wish to be heard? Anybody on Zoom? All right. Um, looking to see here if we had. Does the board have any questions or comments for the applicant, for the applicant's representative? Nope, that's good. Patty, do you wish to add anything, or you're?
I think the only thing that I added new on the, um, response was with regard to the change in character and also the, uh, benefit to be gained by the applicant versus the detriment to the community, and I just pointed out the fact that if the applicant, um, were to construct a six hundred and fifty-foot road that, to be dedicated to the town, um, that would be a cost burden to the entire municipality, um, for caring for that road, um, for only two houses, uh, coupled with the fact that right now we have a thirteen to fourteen-foot wide driveway, and it would be, need to be expanded to twenty feet in width to meet the code, which also would impact the drainage ditches that are alongside the driveway as well as the buried utilities.
Guys, you gotta give me just a minute, I want to, I want to buzz through this again.
Anyone, one other, just to dovetail on that, you know, there is.
We, we just, Patty would have to step back, you'd have to step up to the table, just so people in the, that are watching on television can hear.
I just, I just want to address that for one second, there, there's also another alternative here, right? There's the alternative that myself and a lot of other people, my client, Mr. Cecili, uh, went, when they were ready to purchase or build a house, they went and they found a lot that was a buildable lot, right? They went, followed the rules, found a lot that was a buildable lot. So the alternative is not only that you construct a road, which is one alternative, and it's a viable alternative, there's another alternative, like the rest of us, we go and find a lot that is approved or it's buildable.
Does anyone else wish to be heard from the public Zoom or anything? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second? Poll in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, so. There was a change from the previous denied application, there was an additional buffer put in, um. I don't think that changes our opinion, I don't think it, uh, it mitigates the concerns that we had previously. Anyone have anything else to add? Before we run through the balancing test?
Did you want me to kind of go through some of the homework that you had asked for?
Yeah, yes, please.
And do that, just for the board, because we did do, um, so, and this relates to the balancing test, one of the things we looked at, uh, was the question of the neighborhood character, and so, um, Sarah, would you bring up that photo? Of the, the character of the neighbors, or the, uh, no, the other one, sorry, we'll get to that one in a sec. So the, yeah, boy, doesn't come up as well as it should, but one of the things that I found in looking at flag lots generally, they're, they're disfavored as, uh, something that municipalities do, and, and that's because of the neighborhood character. The neighborhood, the pattern of development in a neighborhood is important to, uh, the, to its overall character, and one of the things that has happened along Falcon Drive is as development has occurred, the, the houses are pretty much generally the same distance away from Falcon Drive on either side of it. Okay, so on the left-hand side of the Falcon Drive, as you're looking at that photograph, um, the houses are a little bit further back, but generally less than three hundred feet away from Falcon Drive, and they all face towards Falcon Drive. On the, uh, right-hand side of Falcon Drive, especially those rectangular lots that you see, um, the development on that side, the houses are generally, um, you know, fifty to seventy-five feet away from the road, and, and they all face onto the driveway. So that's creating the character of the neighborhood, uh, that surrounds, or, you know, th- this area, including where the existing flag lot, um, that, uh, the applicant owns and has built his house on is located. By contrast, what would, would happen if the variance were granted is that it would allow the creation of a new lot that is, uh, and a house that would be over five hundred feet away from Falcon Drive, and instead of fronting on Falcon Drive, it would, uh, front on the neighboring parcels, uh, which are down in the bottom left-hand corner of the, uh, that, that photograph. So, you know, it, there is an inconsistency in the overall character potentially, uh, the board could find there's an inconsistency in the character by allowing the granting of the variance, and it, it would not be, uh, the same as, as what you have as the prevalent character of that neighborhood. Sarah, if you could switch to the next photo, which is really focused on, so the, the green parcel is the applicant's, uh, entire lot that was authorized by the, uh, two thousand and nineteen subdivision, which consolidated three, uh, lots, uh, as part of the pleasant, pleasant view subdivision, and, uh, consolidated, consolidated them into one lot and established that as a flag lot that was authorized as part of that subdivision. The house that was shown on that original subdivision map, um, is, I, I'm not sure if it's as far back as the applicant's house is now constructed, but it was substantially farther back than where, uh, the new house would be constructed if the second flag lot is allowed, and, and we've seen that based on the site plan, um, that, that shows that that house will be, um, you know, no matter what, it'll be much closer to the existing houses that are on Falcon Drive than those properties that, that's Mr. Rosa and, um, the other family, the Cecilla family, it'll be much closer to their houses than they would ever have expected. Cecilla's house was built in two thousand and seventeen, and so that was, uh, prior to the two thousand and nineteen subdivision, but Rosa's house, according to tax records, was built in two thousand and twenty. So, um, you know, in, as, as the attorney has suggested, um, the Russas, uh, you know, made their decisions, you know, based on the, you know, what the zoning code provides and the subdivision as it was approved, which, uh, provided for one flag lot, excuse me, and a house that was much farther away on that flag lot than, um, is currently proposed as part of the second flag lot. So in terms of, uh, the potential impacts on the character of the neighborhood and potential detriment to the neighbors, uh, the planning board, I mean, the Z B A, uh, may want to talk further about what potential impacts there might be, um, and this whole question of how it relates to the character of the neighborhood. Those are the, you know, was part of the, uh, research you asked us to do, and I apologize, I'm kind of a little bit of a cold here, I think, or something.
Nothing personal.
Okay. But, um, the, the other thing that you'd asked us to, to look at was whether there were any other flag lot decisions that the Z B A has made, um, and the one that we did find, uh, was the Alessi, uh, project, and we have, I put the survey for that. You may recall, so this, yeah, uh, take it up a little bit, you may recall, so this is, uh, was a proposed subdivision and creation of two flag lots at the end of, uh, John White Road, um, and, and the difference here, it's not really, you know, it's really apples and oranges as compared to what you're looking at tonight, because this, uh, involved a proposed two lot subdivision of, um, a parcel and the creation of, um, you know, uh, two flag lots that, um, where there was existing single-family dwellings on each of the lots. So, you know, we're not talking about, uh, new construction, um, these houses are both about the same distance away from the end of John White Road, one's a little bit farther away, but again, it's, you know, it was existing development and there was, um, um, you know, it was, this was a variance that the Z B A approved, I believe in twen- twenty-two. So that was the only one that we found for comparison, um, we have a copy of the resolution, if the board wants to look at that, we can talk about that further, uh, but we really felt that this is kind of an apples and oranges situation. In, in terms of the other variance factors, um, that there does not appear to be, uh, another feasible alternative that, um, would not require a variance, the applicant has, has talked about the, um, cost of constructing the, the road as being, uh, cost prohibitive, but, you know, that's not necessarily, um, dispositive of the application. It is, uh, a, a substantial var- variance, I think the board would, would agree, it's, it's a hundred percent, you're doubling the number of flag lots, um, and, and the potential for impacts would be the same, um, you know, in terms of impacts to the, the neighboring pri- adjoining property owners in particular, um, you know, I, the, in terms of potential noise, visual, um, other privacy impacts, the mentioning of stormwater impacts, um, you know, those are all things that the board can consider, um. Ultimately, you know, I, I, I think it, it's a tough, this is a, a tough matter for the board, you know, in my estimation, I mean, the applicant, um, has made, uh, some adjustments to try and, uh, move the house as far away from, as possible from the neighbors and has provided the, uh, you know, buffering, uh, you know, a fifty-foot buffer, um, but, uh, again, the board, you know, you have some photographs that gives you some sense of, uh, the nature of that buffer, um, and, and it does appear to primarily be deciduous trees, um, so there may be seasonal, uh, differences in terms of the, uh, magnitude of any potential impacts. And that's essentially the work that we did, the homework that the board had requested.
Anyone have any questions for counsel?
No.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna read some stuff in and then we'll go to the balancing test. On December sixth, twenty twenty-three, Trevor Dupew, the applicant applied to Town Board, Town Lloyd Zoning Board of Appeals for an area variance to subdivide property tax parcel, SBL eighty-six point four dash three dash nine point one hundred, located at Four Wheel Court in Town Lloyd. This site was created as a flag lot pursuant to the subdivision approved by the planning board in two thousand and nineteen. That consolidation, a number of lots previously approved as part of a two thousand and seven subdivision. Six flag, private access to one home constructed by the applicant in two thousand and twenty-two, according to the property head. Site flag, private access to one home constructed by the applicant in 2022, according to property tax records. Site is located in agricultural rural zoning districts designated by the Town of Lloyd. The applicant requires an area variance for the proposed creation of a second flag lot pursuant to zoning code 100-14-4, which limits subdivision of four or fewer lots to a maximum of one flag lot. In 2022, the ZBA denied a similar request from the applicant for the creation of a second flag lot. And the applicant has revised his request in an effort to try to address some of the prior concerns regarding the variance request expressed by the ZBA and neighbors. In addition to the consideration, considering the applicant and other supporting information provided by the applicant in the supporter's request for an area variance, the ZBA has also received and considered public comment and opposition of the requested variance because of its potential effect on the neighborhood character and adjacent properties. We've closed the public hearing. So to the balancing test. Granting the applicant an area variance for the creation of a second flag lot would produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and a detriment to the nearby properties. Granting the requested variance would produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. With the exception of the applicant's approved flag lots, is oriented with the homes fronting towards Falcon Drive, a public road owned and maintained by the Town of Lloyd. Homes on each side of Falcon Drive are generally the same distance away from the road, with homes on the east side of the road closer to the road, less than 100 feet, and those on the west side of Falcon, 300 feet. The creation of a second flag lot with a home much further away from Falcon Drive, approximately 500 feet, and behind two lots with existing homes would result in an undesirable change in the pattern of development and the character of Falcon Drive neighborhood. Granting the requested area variance will also produce a detriment to the adjoining residential homes between the site and the Falcon Drive owned by James and Sarah Rosa, SBL 86.4-3-11.1, and Richard and Gina Sicily, Sicily? Sicily? Thank you. SBL 86.4-3-13. According to the property tax records, their homes were built in 2020 and 2017 respectively. So both parties were entitled to reasonably re- reply upon rely upon, I lost my place here. The restriction against more than one flag lot in a zoning code. In the 2019 subdivision approved by the planning board that created the one flag lot owned by the applicant and depicted a location for one home on the lot much farther away than home now proposed on a second flag lot for which a variance is requested. Further, while the Sicily's home was constructed before the time of 2019 subdivision approval, the Rosa home was not built until after the map of the 2019 subdivision was constructed. While the applicant has made a substantial effort to locate the proposed home on a second flag lot as far away from the Sicily and Rosa properties as possible, they proposed to maintain a permanent 50-foot vegetative buffer between those adjoining properties and any development on the second flag lot. The creation and development of the second flag lot has the potential to create an unanticipated detriment to these neighboring properties, including potential noise, visual, and other impacts to affect the reasonable use and enjoyment. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant from the creation of the second flag lot may not be achieved by a feasible way without the requested area variance. The applicant may not be able to achieve this goal of subdividing the site into two lots in a reasonable, feasible way absent granting the requested area variance for a second flag lot. While the construction of the town road to a private, direct public access to a second would avoid these need, would avoid the need for a variance. From review of the applicant's prior variance application, the estimated cost for constructing a road to serve as, to serve the second lot is substantial and may not be affordable to the applicant. In addition, the need to acquire easements over private lands not owned by the applicant for a public road to serve the second flag lot may also contribute to the difficulty of this alternative. The requested variance is substantial. The applicant's request for a 100% increase in the number of flag lots created in a sub is substantial. Further, as discussed with respect to other variance factors considered by the ZBA, granting a requested variance has the potential to create impacts to the neighborhood and adjoining properties. Granting the requested variance would have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Granting a requested variance for a second flag lot would negatively impact the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood and adversely impacting neighborhood character and resulting in potential noise, visual, and other impacts to adjoining properties. The applicant's need for a requested area variance is self-created, is a self-created difficulty. The applicant's request for a variance to allow the creation of a second flag lot is a self-created difficulty. The applicant purchased the site in 2020 as one consolidated parcel and should have known that the creation of a second flag lot would require an area variance from the ZBA. Thus, the, thus, the applicant's difficulty arises from its own action and is self-created. Soon to the very final, the balancing test, that's remains that the benefit to granting a requested variance are outweighed by the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood arising from such a grant based on the following findings. The ZBA acknowledges that granting a requested variance would allow the applicant to potentially benefit of a second flag lot subject to the planning board approval of his proposed two-lot subdivision. And the ZBA believes that the benefit to the applicant of granting the requested area variance is outweighed by the detriment to the neighborhood and the community that would occur from such a granting because, as set forth above, granting the requested variance would produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and detriment to the existing adjacent residential uses is substantial and have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the existing neighborhood. Moreover, the applicant's difficulty was self-created. Like to entertain a motion to disapprove the requested area variance for creation of a second flag lot.
Disapprove?
To disapprove, to not allow the second flag lot.
So moved.
Second? All right.
Do you want to have, uh, see if there's any discussion regarding any of the variance factors?
Does, does anyone have any questions, concerns of the balancing test that it was read? All right, so yes for me, Paul?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Russ?
This is to deny.
This is to deny?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Okay. Being that.
You're okay with that? Did you want to approve the flag lot?
You want to approve the flag lot?
No.
Want to deny it?
You want to deny the flag lot?
Yeah.
Okay, so then it's not a no, it's a yes.
That's why I asked, a double negative, yeah. No, no, that's all right.
Is it yes or no?
Okay, unfortunately, your application has been denied. Thank you.
Would you, uh, mind doing a motion to allow me to make some administrative changes to the, um, to suit typos in here if I pop?
Yeah, entertain a motion for Paul to clean up the draft as.
I make that motion to make the adjustments in there, to make it more clear.
Have a second?
Cory, second.
Second? He, he's not a, he's, he's an alternate. Sean, second?
We're trying to get you in there, Cory. We're trying to get you in there.
We want you to move out faster.
He beat you to it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We'll get back to you in a jiffy.
Thank you. All right, one more continued public hearing. First Presbyterian Church of Highland, area variance 26-28 Church Street, SBL 88.69-1-9. Applicant is seeking an area variance for 8.1 feet of relief for the rear yard setback. I don't believe we required anything of the applicant. I believe we had Paul draft a resolution to approve. Which why don't I have this?
I don't know, I, I didn't see that.
All right, I don't think there's anything else I have to read. Okay, so, yep, public hearing's open. I want to, uh, ask any member of the public whether they wish to be heard, or anyone on Zoom who wish to be heard on this application. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Bill, second. Russ? Paul? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, I don't think anything's changed from what we had discussed previously. I'm just gonna read through the balancing test. Granting the requested variance for the, for the project would not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to the neighbors as the structures are pre-existing and there will be no visible change to the character of the neighborhood. Utility connections and access to each structure are separate. The only change is the addition of a lot line, which will not negatively impact the neighborhood. Therefore, no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood nor detriment to the neighbors will occur. The benefits sought to the applicant from the project cannot be achieved in any feasible way without requested variance. The only alternative that does not require a variance would be for the applicant not to undertake the proposed subdivision, which would not achieve the goal of creating a separate lot with the existing home that can be sold. The requested variance is substantial. The setback area variance is one-third of the 25-feet setback totaling 8.1 feet. However, the location of the lot line is restricted by the placement of the existing buildings, accessory structures, accessory structures, access to the property. Further, granting and granting the requested variance will not result in any impacts. Granting the requested variance would not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district as the setback to the rear property line will not cause any environmental impact to the surrounding neighborhood. There will be no visible change to the character of the neighborhood as all involved structures are existing and there will be no physical change that could adversely impact the environment. The applicant's need for a request is self-created difficulty, but the factor is not dispositive on whether or not the requested variance should be granted. Would like to entertain a motion to approve the variance as read.
I make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Russ? All right. It's a yes for me, Paul?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
All right.
And the call is absent.
Thank you very much.
Patty?
Thank you, Patty.
Okay. So, I lost my paper here. All right, um, Sarah, could you? Oh, we're not done yet.
I'm not reading this.
Sarah, could you forward the application for David Harry on 271 Vineyard Avenue to the planning board for their comment? Thank you.
Could you fill me in a little bit, just so you have something to think about over the weekend?
Sure. Um, he, he's got a 10-by-14 shed that he wants to put 1.4 feet from his side yard, right side yard. We're kind of leaning that he's, he's gonna come back with some pictures. He's gonna come back with, uh, some pictures of flags in the proposed and further away from the property line. So what we had discussed with the option, or told the applicant that the further away from the property line it is, the easier it is for us to grant the variance. So there's an existing gate that goes to his pool area. He's gonna see if, if he can get it as close to that gate as possible without being a detriment to the
Pool.
The functionality of the gate.
Right.
And he's gonna take a couple of pictures of the flag being there and then measure over the 14 feet to see how far away from his property line he's gonna be. There you go, got something to think about.
Yep.
Okay, uh, did everyone familiarize themselves with the April minutes?
Yes, I remember. So he's gonna bring it closer this way. To the pool.
He's gonna put the flag. He's gonna go that way.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion. Can you pay attention? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Opposed? You're opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. So, Paul is opposed. Like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, gentlemen, we'll see.